Yeah, you're off.
You walked down the street.
William Gifford? Yes?
Civic, civic story. Member of the committee.
I shortened that stuff. Member of the Budget Committee.
Rocky Smith, City Commission.
Eric Underwood, City of Oregon City Economic Development.
David Wimmer, Finance Director.
David Fraser, City Manager.
Doug Nilly, Mayor of Oregon City.
Betty Muth, Oregon City Commissioner.
Did you want to get back table of status?
Sure.
Marion Cole, Library Director.
Jim Laffley, Human Resources Director.
Scott Archer, Community Services Director.
Nancy Ives, City Recorder.
Tony Conkle, Community Development Director.
Nancy Crowshaw, Public Works Director.
Denise Ty, Assistant Park Recreation Director.
Katie Rigs, Assistant City City Manager.
Chris Wathworth, Oregon City Police.
Sharon Coglan, Oregon City Police.
Mike Conrad, Oregon City Police.
Jim Mandito.
Joe Conrad, Oregon City Police.
Please, please.
We're very well connected.
Got you back.
Mr. Chair, I was going to suggest that if we needed to do budget cuts, that we did by any department that wasn't here. They're all here. We can figure out the ones that show the least number of people, so we better not touch the police.
Right. Second motion. Now, we are, my, there's a couple of members, Mr. Fraser, are we going to be okay quorum-wise?
Yes, we will. Chris Story did call and tell us the conflict, so he wouldn't be here tonight. He's on the school board, so that might explain. They've got a little more challenging budget scenario.
And then did we get any word on Mrs. Bruce?
No, I haven't heard from her or from Ms. Sander.
Do you feel like we can proceed though?
Great for me.
We have enough to proceed?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You have six, yeah, I mean, you have seven, not these six.
Okay. And then you've got roster and table of contents. Is there anything going to do with that? Or can we start with Mr. Ward?
We can start with Mr. Ward.
All right.
Okay, just, you guys have all been through this. Let's say in four of it. Your charge is to review the budget, listen to the budget message, let the public speak if they want to, and make any adjustments if you want. And then at the end of the process, you approve the budget in an amount, and you approve a tax rate and any tax levies. And then your job is done and goes on to the commission for a formal adoption in June.
And you also have to elect a chair and secretary.
Yes. Am I the only citizen member here?
No.
William.
Because I believe it has to be one of the citizen members.
Yes.
Is that true?
No.
William's excellent.
Well, you would think everybody knew that.
There you go.
All right, agenda item number three is election of chairperson.
Move purpose.
Second.
Not sure that's the way it works. I'd like to open nominations, and I'll start with myself. I would like to nominate William Gifford as the chairperson for the Budget Committee.
Second.
This time I'd like to close nominations.
Excuse me, the chair actually is not allowed to make the nomination.
That's true. But in any case, all is in favor.
Well, there's two motions.
One to talk. Okay, we have a motion to elect William Gifford as chairperson. And we had a second.
Wait, now we see two more people.
My motion didn't give a second, so nothing's happened to that.
I seconded yours. Yeah, you've got two nominations. One is for you and one is for William.
All right, well, all those in favor for Chris Geiger for budget chairman indicate by saying aye.
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 The ayes have. I guess those four ayes.
Any opposed? Aye. So I'm not sure how many that was.
Why don't you raise your hand? I think it's easier. For Chris. Aye. One, two, three, four, for Chris. Did I count right? Four? Okay, and for William Gifford? We just realized. One, two, three.
I'm raising you. So then you've got a tie vote.
Okay. We have three for William Gifford, four for Chris.
All right, very good.
Good campaign, Chris.
Yeah. All right. I'd like to open nominations for the position of secretary for the Budget Committee.
I nominate William for secretary.
I decline the nomination.
You decline?
I decline, I'll be heading with secretary.
It's just a formal. Actually, where I tell you, she doesn't.
Whoever, he or she does have to take minutes.
Doesn't have to take minutes?
No.
Are you withdrawing your nomination? You're attentive.
Thank you, William.
All right, nominations are closed. All those in favor for William Gifford for a position of secretary indicate by raising your hand. Any opposed? All right, well, that motion carries as well. I hope he's chairman and William Gifford will be secretary. Are you responsible? Very good.
Well, you're just like getting nominated for either the chair or the secretary. You guys are just waiting out there.
All right, very good. Agenda item number five, review of city commission goals, budget addendum, and future forecasts. Mr. Wimmer or Mr. Fraser?
Good, oh, okay. Well, I guess.
So on page 20 on your budget book are the commission's goals.
Well, you have them out.
We also have them published in the goal book later in the year. They're also on our website. Since you got your documents before the meeting, I'm assuming you're familiar with the goals. I know the commissioners are, so that's live with you. And just a word about these goals, that after these are adopted by the commission, actually even before they're adopted by the commission, when it looks like they're going to be adopted by the commission after our January goal setting, we start about forming a budget to target these goals. So you'll see things in the budget that are specifically targeted at the goals set by the commission.
There really is no budget addendum at this point in the future forecast. It's not either. We do have one little change when you get around to approving the budget. That's just a minor, little $7,000 tweak. So that's. Yeah, I think everybody, given everybody a couple, I messed up and made, put this up on the wrong line on page 142. And so this is the reminder.
Mr. Wimmer, I'm not sure that our mayor has one.
I second your vote.
Oh, you put it in.
He put it in my vote. Well, he was overeating pizza. I guess why we're going to approval of minutes then?
Forty-two.
Should all gotten their minutes. I don't know if you print them off online or.
I meant to approve minutes.
Second.
Okay, the motion to review and approve minutes from April 18, 2011 has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. All right, agenda item number seven. We are charged with receiving the budget message from the budget pumps.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I've got about two dozen slides here tonight to go through. And then at the end of my presentation, we welcome any questions the committee has about any of the funds or departments or other budgeted items in the budget. So we're going to start by going over all the funds and the general fund. We're going to look at Public Works Fund, Street, Water, Sewer, Storm. Then we're going to look at some of the highlights in the budget, not all of them, but the major ones. The Capital Projects. This is one that some cities, we actually put people on a bus and take them around and show them the physical things that decisions they made prior to here have resulted in, which is really kind of fun, but it's fairly time-consuming. And the last couple of years, it seems like just showing the graphics and some of the stuff we have to demonstrate with technology is, it seems to be sufficient for that. But if any of you want individual tours of any of the facilities or projects, let me know and we can arrange those in a secondary meeting. And then we'll have a summary, and then we'll have questions from any of you that have them. So this is the all-funds budget. As you can see, property taxes are up by about $400,000 for general fund. Most of that is due to the Measure Five authorized increase. So it's not that taxes have gone up, it's simply the Measure Five amount that is due to the city. Also, we have intergovernmental revenues down by almost $13 million. And most of that is due to the fact that we've expended $12.4 million of the Jug Handle project. We still have.
Do you have these graphs in here at all?
The whole PowerPoint presentation's on your table.
Yeah, you've got a hard copy on the table.
Thank you very much.
And we'll also post this on the website for anyone who throws away the paper and wants to relive the evening. So our franchise, also wanted to mention that $240,000 of that, intergovernmental revenues being down is, we completed the Sportcraft Marina project this year. And so that was a grant that we had last year. So those are both large grants that are being expended essentially. So our beginning balances are up about $4.5 million with six funds. Being the major contributors are Library Reserve Fund at $955,000, Public Works Building Reserve at $1.4 million, Street Operations, $640,000, Street SDCs, $388,000, Fleet Replacement, $471, and our Parks SDCs are up $292,000. So that makes up the main part of the beginning balances right here. That's the difference between the 22.5 and the 27. So now we're going to look, essentially, we're going to go through this and look at revenues and expenditures of each of the categories that I mentioned in the first slide. So this is expenditures from all funds. And here we see that our Personnel Services are up about $800,000. About half of that is a 2% COLA that we anticipate for negotiating with our labor unions and our general employees will also receive the same COLA. We're also adding an Assistant Finance Director. And I say adding, it's not really adding, it's just budgeting for it a second time. Last year, we budgeted for it when we thought Mr. Wimmer was going to be with us longer. He went on a vacation to Mexico with his retired friends, who convinced him he should retire sooner. So we didn't fill the position of assistant because it's my belief that the new director would benefit from filling the position with their own assistant. So we're going to rebudget for that position essentially one more time. Hopefully, one more time will be it. We also are adding a Code Enforcement Officer that that was a result of the commission's goal-setting this year. And then materials and services are up about 10%. That's partly for the new Urmertinger House Restoration Account. There's $415,000 in that account post this budget. We created a new line item for Urmertinger because we kept dedicating funds every year. Last year, we dedicated $100,000, for example. And each time we would dedicate funds, they would have to be carried over from year to year. So we looked at the project and thought, you know, this thing could go on for three or four years before we get all the grant money in place and we're really finished. So we decided to go ahead and make it a line item. So you see that this year, affecting the materials and services budget right there. So capital outlay is down about 21%. Most of that is due to the $12.8 million expended on the Jug Handle and the Sportcraft Boat Ramp that I mentioned already. Our contingency is down about $3.2 million. And that's attributable to Public Works Building Reserve budget, spending of $3.8 million more than in 2011, '12. So essentially, what Oregon City is doing is for facilities like Public Works and the library, we're in a good position because we're one of the few cities in Oregon that has enough in general fund to be able to transfer money from different accounts to build things. So instead of going out to bond to build these facilities, and we will have to on larger facilities, like for example, the police facility. It's just too expensive that we, we wouldn't be able to save enough money before 2022 to actually build a new police station. So we're going to have to go out with a bond on that. With these others, we're essentially, by moving the library into the Carnegie, for example, basically living there, and while you're there, you're saving what you would have spent on a nicer building to save for a nicer building. So it's, it's a responsible way to budget. It does delay the fact that we, you know, we don't have the facilities just yet. And we probably, there's a good chance that we will go out to bond for some of these facilities. But when we do, by doing these transfers, at least we have money saved up. So we'll have a pretty substantial part of it already if we do have to go out. And I think that's a good thing to share with voters.
Were you speculating we might go out for a bond for Public Works?
It just kind of depends. It depends on the side and depends on how much it was going to cost. But we, we are dedicating money every year to this at a pretty substantial amount. So the next one is general fund expenditures by category. And this just kind of shows, this isn't a surprise to anybody, but personnel, we're largely a people-driven service organization. Our largest department is police. You will see that soon enough. But that's mostly a result of, the small increase there is mostly a result of adding the Assistant Finance Director and the 2% COLA that I mentioned already.
So even in your narrative, you indicate that that amount has increased by 3% annually.
3% annually? Well, it's 3%.
But why does it increase?
It depends. He's talking about the, you're talking about the cost of living adjustment?
What page are you on?
Page 11, number two. Perhaps I was only talking about the Library Building Reserve Fund? It's increased 3% annually? The sentence just jumped down at me.
Yeah, I don't think I would have, well, if I said 3%, that wasn't, I don't think that's in my budget message book. Page 11.
Roman number two.
Bottom of the middle paragraph, under General Funds to State Building.
Yeah, that's the library.
So library goes up 3% a year?
Yes. Well, we started out with $107,000 subsidy way back when, and we've been inflating it 3% every year.
But that's not the cost of living adjustment.
No, I was just, I'm sorry about.
I'm just wondering the strategy in that, like, why aren't we doing 5% a year or 2% a year?
Might not be need to do at all because, I mean, things have changed a lot since we've started doing that. They have the library levy and it's getting lots and lots of money that they're putting aside. So, I mean, if general fund gets into straight sometime, that would probably be one thing that would go.
Well, the buying power of those transfers is, I'm assuming that the 3% was originally established because that was the assumed inflation rate.
Gentlemen, I'd like to.
It was a hundred years ago.
Yeah, I think at that time, we had 3% going on. We made the commitment that monies that were coming from our general fund at the time, we didn't have the district, but money was coming from both the county and from the city, and the city's proportion, we decided to commit to the library fund. And I presume at that time, we said 3% because that was probably about where we were.
Okay, this seems like a convenient round numbers of 3%.
Yeah, it's targeted at inflation almost.
That makes sense.
So the buying power of what we're transferring then would be adjusted with inflation, which.
It probably also reflected we would get 3% to increase in the property tax revenues.
Max.
So this year, the police department will receive about half as much in state shared revenue for 911 telephone service. Because Clackamas County Dispatch will now be receiving that. That was an action, I think, by the state. And they'll be transferring that money directly to them. And that $74,000 less is exacerbated a little bit because we will also have a $3,000 net loss to the city. So about $77,000 compared to last year. I'm a little bit concerned about that because that could actually put pressure on us to raise our tax levy by 3% to 5% next year to cover that. And that's just a change that we really couldn't avoid. It was a state law change, and so there was nothing we could do to prevent it.
Isn't the fire district and its budget end this year, next year?
The end of this year. So.
The end of this fiscal year.
2012, '13, this budget you're looking at.
Yes.
So here's the revenue, or, you know, the revenue by department. And the slide looks a little lopsided, but really what I need to explain here is that non-departmental is, well, you see administration court, police, community services. The non-departmental is anything, there's Blue Heron, the Urmertinger, there's an $86,000 subsidy to our engineering group because they're still not.
Disputable.
Here we are. That's right here. And you can see the slight increase here in policing. They're pretty much the same in these other categories as well because of the COLA. We'll talk a little, the street fund, this is the page that had a mistake on it. And I think you've all got the newest version. And essentially, you've got this deficit as our intergovernmental revenues and our pavement management utility fee, which is charges for services is increasing. The rate increase is $2.22 per household, so that would be about $26.64 a year for single family. And the intergovernmental revenues decreasing were again due to the Jug Handle. So you can see in there.
Is this the last year for the pavement increase of $2.02?
That's it there.
Well, for the pavement, it goes down next year.
Yeah.
About 7% or something.
For those of you, I guess everybody here was here, except for maybe Carol.
What's her name now?
You can see the name. Yes, Carol. The PIMAP, I think, started off, they ramped it up early, they gradually so that it wouldn't hit all at once. And so this is the last 25% increase, which is still $2.22 a month.
I think that's got a lot of public support though.
It does.
You're going to see later in the slideshow.
I would see a big return on their investment on that.
And you're going to see some of the proof that they have in drilling on it. You'll see pictures of it at the end of reinforced stuff. So again, here we see the effects of the capital outlay from the Jug Handle. We're adding a .85 part-time, full-time equivalent employee. And then we're transferring $150,000 to Building Reserve. But those are really the only changes in the street fund expenditures.
You're adding a .1 point?
Yeah, .85 people in the part-time for Public Works.
For Public Works.
Those are seasonal for the street.
What was the total percentage of total cost of the Jug Handle?
The city portion?
Ooh, gosh, I would want to get back to you on that, but I think we used about $1.8 million from Clackamas County traffic impact charges. When they moved up to that soils, they paid money for a bunch of permits throughout the city. So compared to the $22 million. And then we also have other federal funding, about $2.5 million in other federal funding too. So our proportion is very small.
5% to 10% of the total?
So 1.5 out of 26.
It wouldn't have been 10%.
Not even 10%?
Yeah, probably, it can't be too many in box and work.
So here we see the charges for services on the water funds. This $5.5 million is current rates that we collected this year. And there's the rate increase that's already scheduled approved by the city commission. So that is reflected here in this budget. And that's really the only significant change.
They're taking to account the loss from Blue Heron?
Yes, yes.
Which was significant.
Yeah, there's some good news about that, too. When we get into franchise fees or when we get into the amount of franchise we collect, I'll share with you that the way we calculate our Blue Heron franchises changed, and so that helped us quite a bit.
And there's a double whammy on the charge for services, right? I mean, we expect increased rates and increased uses.
I don't know if we predict an increase in use or not.
Yeah, until it starts getting warmer.
I mean, the population, the city grows.
You can see on South Fork, and we see the water revenue. It's gone down the last three years or something.
This South Fork has been pretty flat.
Yeah, the water actually has been.
And so far, the usage?
Well, yeah, they're going to, it's been getting colder and weather.
And that's why I asked, because I would imagine the middle of the year consumer of water that no longer selling.
Well, they weren't paying for a lot of it.
They didn't pay for the last $45,000 in water. So we have a claim at the bankruptcy court of unsecured creditors, so the chances of collecting matter about as good as the chances of a day's.
Getting the water back, exactly.
But we're still trying. I mean, we have our name in the hat for what it's worth. But I do want to say something though about the water fund because at the last council meeting, commission meeting, and our commissioners talked about this each of the last two years in their retreat, is the water rate rollback. I just want the committee members, especially those of you who are not commissioners, to realize how big of an effort that's going to be for us to inform people and get that dealt with. It's a little bit of a legal quagmire. There were some citizens who had some creative ideas on how the court might interpret that. At the last commission meeting, we talked to the city attorney since then, and he's reminded us that that person isn't an attorney and that they're wrong. We want them to be right, but it does look like we're going to have to have a voter-approved solution, probably. And that means getting out there, we'll put all the research together, provide the talking points and several presentations. But then, once the commission votes for that, it'll be good before the voters, the staff will have to pull back. And it will be up to people in the community, friends of Oregon City Water, you name it. Some groups, user groups, different civic organizations to get out there and get the message out about what that means because you can't roll your water rates back to 1994 and stay solid.
I think there was some mention in here about the election being made in 2012.
The commission hasn't established that time yet. But we're, we're going to try to get at least a couple of elections in there in case the first one isn't successful. And you never know. But if we're not successful the first time around, we'll have to try again. So this is the water funds expenditure budget. You can see that capital outlay is smaller this year. And I guess really what's, no, it's not smaller. There are more smaller projects, that's what I meant to say. There is water land replacements, pipeline replacements. We're an older city, so we have a lot of infrastructure needs for pipelines because the ones we have, some of them are really old. We're doing some rate studies, and we're contemplating other changes, particularly in some of our sewer lines, in some of our sewer lines, where we have a frequency of backups that's higher than most other cities. But that's the major changes there on the water fund.
Before you go on to the water fund, sir?
Questions at the end are gonna be, "No?" That's okay.
Oh, it's fresh.
Okay.
On the road, the new before, at the end of the utility funds discussion, it talks about SDC credits, $200,000 on SDC credits. I'm curious, how people get credits on SDCs?
If they put in infrastructure that we would have normally paid for.
So that's compensation for it?
Yeah, you know, we would, either we pay it, or they pay it, and we get a credit, basically, that's the way it works.
Okay. Great, boss. It's not real money.
Well, in fact, it's real money.
There's money we don't collect from them, because they already spent it.
Well, it's like, you go build my driveway, and I give you a credit, and you can go use it somewhere else, or I could pay for building my driveway.
Okay, just wanted to know how that's working.
So again, the sewer funds, the charges for services here are increasing slightly. You see from 5.6 to 5.8, and that's a result of the $1.70 a month per household for a single family, or $20.40 a year increase in sewer funds.
SDCs are also estimated to go up another $100,000.
These are sewer fund expenditures. The real significant one here that, you know, I want to tell you about is the transfer of 300,000 to the building reserve. We transferred 400,000 last year. This is the public works building reserve. And that's reflected right here. Questions on that? So the storm drain funds. This one also has a schedule rate increase of 3%, which turns out to be 25 cents a month for a single family. It's not a big increase, but it's one that historically, I think in most cities at least, has been way behind, and so it's good to be able to have some funds available for our storm drain services. And this is how we're proposing to spend it.
So the storm drain fund and the storm drain SDC fund are different?
Those are lumped in this, these are the, I mean, we say these funds are usually included, the SDC fund also, like it's the 521, 522, up there is the 521, is an operating fund, and 22 is the SDC fund.
They just coincidentally be almost the same amount?
You don't know what they're.
Beginning balance.
That's a fun number.
The beginning fund balance is 272.
You can't tell me that. That's the two funds lumped together, so you have to go back in the budget to see what the pieces make up. Some of the previous funds had three funds, and they had rate stabilization, SEC, and the operating fund, that was the case for sewer and water. And storm drain had, or street had three funds, operations, PIMAP, and SDCs.
And here are some of the highlights. Again, the property taxes are increasing 3.4% over last year, that's a major five amount. We have kept up our annexation pledge. And the other thing to point out is the Blue Heron expenditures. That looks like a larger number than the commission's minimum 100,000, and that's because it's last year's that we haven't expended, which is still in there, plus 125,000. So, and our agreement to be part of the partnership as a minimum, I said 100,000, but it's actually a minimum of 100. No one has put in more than the minimum so far, and no one's actually written any checks to Metro at this point, because we're still, we're doing due diligence on that. And for anybody that wants to know, there really are several, four due diligence areas of liability down there, environmental and demolition being the two big ones. There's also some historic inventory that creates some potential liability for redevelopment. And those are being studied right now by Metro. We're in anticipation of trying to make an offer, or being ready to make an offer on the property by December. The good thing about that to me is that regardless of whether Metro ultimately purchases, and the partners, the state, the county, and the city, and Metro end up holding the property for a while for redevelopment, even if we don't do it, that information and that due diligence is gonna have to be done by somebody. So the fact that we're doing it and preparing the site for reinvestment is a good thing in my mind, even if the private sector steps in sooner rather than later, it's still worthwhile to have that out of the way, and hopefully at the end, we would have a kind of clean slate to offer up for redevelopment, even if we're not involved in actual purchasing.
What was the fourth one?
Stormwater.
Stormwater. Currently, the county, as you know, just bought that piece with 60 acres across the river, and that's also Blue Heron, and it's all one big, one holding, there are separate tracks, but there's actually a stormwater pipe under the river that connects and runs off, sheets off a lot of the water from the Oregon City side of Blue Heron over to that, the settling ponds on the Westland side. And so there's some liability there, because we're not sure that pipe will stay in place and stay in operation. I suspect that Les may have some other ideas about what they want to do with stormwater from our side of the river. And so that's one of the liabilities that has to be studied, because that could be a fairly expensive solution, what to do there. So these are just some budget highlights, some more things that, as you know, we've been subsidizing community development. I hate to use that word subsidy, because we're all in this together, but essentially, when I got here, we were, I think it was almost 800,000 a year that we were spending to keep that going. There have been, there's been a layoffs there and a reduction. We had a budget position last year that we didn't fill, because it didn't look like revenues were gonna be, you know, strong enough to warrant filling a position, so we didn't do that. And down below, it talks a little bit about the annexation pledge and the fact that the commission has maintained its commitment to keep that promise. And I think that's important, and that'll probably sit well with voters when it comes time to ask for permission to do other things. Any questions about these? I want to say, I know we're on to library, and I pushed the button too soon, because I want to say just a little bit about building activity. This equator project on Glen Oak Road has been, I guess in a way, skewing our building results a little bit. And my first fiscal year here, two years ago, we had 303 permits total. Last year, we had 342 permits total, and this year, we're estimating 420. So that is a little bit of an uptick in activity. Most of that is driven by new single-family, townhouses, and multifamily. But another thing that's promising to me is that there are 97 expected commercial additions. So those are remodels of commercial properties, and that's usually a healthy indicator that people are reinvesting in commercial properties. So we're not ready to roll out any vans or anything at this point, but we're thinking this as a more optimistic outlook than we had last year at the same time. So this tells a little bit about the library fund. This is keeping what the commission, city commission's goal number three, which is to address critical facility needs. We've been shopping, basically, for the last year for a site for our library, and we're still doing that. So we're gonna continue to add, make these transfers until the library site is not like purchased, but once it's designed, we'll have a better idea of exactly how much money we will need, and then we'll have to go out for permission from the voters to approve that expenditure. He said across from the DSB?
I'm sorry. No, the county elected not to pursue that at this time.
At this time?
Yeah. Until they decide to review their master plan, they're not interested in talking about it.
Can I ask a question? We're talking about here, general revenue funds that come into us in terms of this 150,000 going over. We've also got district funds that come in. Are you prepared to talk about that now, or are you prepared to do it later?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just wondering how much of the district funds are being committed to the building?
Well, actually, some of this is out of the district funds. The additional $200,000 that we're talking about right there is set aside out of the district income. So a portion of my operating funds every year I set aside, because I don't know what might come up that year, either for a purchase, or, you know, engineering work, or anything else that if we have to do due diligence on the site, then I need access to some operating funds right away.
Well, the first sentence reads, "Transfer 750,000 to library building fund." Is that, is the total of district and?
And general fund money, that's the total.
Okay.
Yes.
No, that's my question.
That's not?
No, there, 200 is on top of that. 200 off general fund over to reserve, this is 750,000 from library fund to reserve.
That is over the building fund, so that, and that's district money?
This is.
Well, yeah, basically, the 750 is.
That's what I'm asking. And that's a transfer to a reserve fund for a building.
Right.
Okay.
But there's also 200,000 over the general fund, that's the same reserve fund.
Okay.
And the general fund money, I mean, the agreement that I made with Maureen is that if you stay in the Carnegie for the time you're there, we already own the Carnegie, and before she was paying pretty high rent, and she was paying that rent every month as part of our operations cost. So the deal is, if you stay in the Carnegie and it's already paid for, then the money you were spending on that rent can go toward the new building.
And you stay there for 25 years.
I told her that.
That's totally not being.
You know, as long as you want.
And then, the reserve fund also contains a million dollars that the county originally gave you.
It doesn't contain it, but there's a promise for that.
We haven't received it.
Now, you have to have a project, before you can apply for that money.
Okay. Another reason not to wait 25 years.
There is, there is an opportunity cost that I don't know is calculating in there, and the fact that it's nice for us to give a space for the library to hang their hat until we can get a room and build. But if they weren't there, there is a potential that we could be leasing that space out or doing something else with the Carnegie Center, that could bring in some revenue.
Yeah.
Well, I am maintaining the type of building too, Maureen.
Yeah, she's maintaining.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't think that's the case in the past. I mean, certainly, it was used for things, but as far as the moneymaker, the maintenance on that age of the building, it doesn't pencil as a moneymaker, I don't think. But it's still a treasure we want to keep. These are some other major capital projects, you know a lot about these, because you've seen them occurring throughout the city in the last year. You might not have seen the waterline replacements, but those are really important. The pump station upgrades, you probably haven't seen that one either, but those are also There's some more capital projects listed. And this amount for the Urmatinga is, this, we have a pretty broad range there, because the way this thing, I mean, when I first looked at it, my first couple of weeks there, I thought, "How much?" Because you could take it apart and rebuild the entire thing for, I'm thinking half that, I don't know, but it's not modern construction, for one thing. The goal here is to have it constructed according to all the standards of the National Parks Service, so that in the future, they may be willing to take it from us for maintenance as part of their campus for Fort Vancouver, here in Oregon City, worship. But the other reason that that's that large of a differentiation between the five and the seven is because the estimate we had was seven, but we're also learning that a lot of it depends on further study by architects and engineers for the site, because the site itself is the problem. The soils under it for the first 10 or 12 feet are not stable, and so there's gonna have to be an engineered solution to keep it where it is. And we have already started, we haven't started spending the money for the total renovation, we started spending money for those, some of those studies, because that money, the studies, the results of the studies actually help us leverage our money to apply for future grants for that site. So we have to almost, you know, you're in, you're committed, and then to get the answers to apply for more money, you have to spend more money to get the answers. If that makes sense.
I have a question, and it's probably dad recollection, but I thought last year, when we actually committed money, it was under 50,000 out of 100,000.
I think that's correct.
And you said 150,000?
That was my score.
Okay. And we're transferring another 100,000 under this budget into that budget, right?
How much is the total for this?
With Maureen?
Yeah, we're transferring 100. We're gonna do 350 this year, and 100 beginning year, and there's also a grant, estimated grant, 140 or so.
I think I have another slide here, but there's about 445,000 total in that line, in that lineup.
After this budget's got.
Okay. So swimming pool boiler replacement, and master planning for two new parks, Glen Oak and Field Run, those are also gonna, I think, make some people happy. And the River Crest Park restroom is actually not a reconstruction or renovation, that facility is apparently beyond renovation, more or less, so that's, that amount includes demolishing the current structure and rebuilding an all-new facility.
Does that include piping into it?
So these are just some interesting things here, particularly this part, because I haven't seen this in the last 10 years, where we only got, I say only, we have a 5% increase in dental, which is a fairly small portion of our load, our benefit load, and 4.4 in Kaiser, where we've been seeing 8, 10, 15 for the last 10 years. We actually anticipated 15 for medical this year, so we were pretty happy when we got these numbers.
Yeah, those are good numbers.
Yes, that's very helpful. And then I'm gonna show you some of the photographs of the before and after. This is a pool. And you probably remember, we talked about this last year, I know that, Autumn, you were pretty animated when we were talking about deferred maintenance costs at some of these facilities, and we will, we'll be back next year after we've kept our fire annexation pledge with some suggestions on how to bolster the funds for these deferred maintenance costs. But this, at least we did something out there, actually, we did more than something, we did quite a bit for considering what we're up against. These are the acoustic tiles before, and really, it's, the new tiles is not what kept these people out of the pool that you see here.
Yeah.
It was just, it was just a coincidence that one picture was taken.
I like the echoes.
Yeah.
It's still noisy.
Yeah. Let's just show some of the tile work. This is one of the neatest things, though, right here is this Nema park. And I wanted to remind everybody that at Nema, they're having a, we're having a ribbon cutting event, so you're all welcome to join in the fund. That's gonna be June 14th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Nema Children's Park. And this shows some of the construction, the elements that are out there. If you haven't been out there to visit the park, it's really, it's really nice. And this, last year, I remember creating quite a stir in the neighborhood, because I was stunned at how many people use this.
Oh, yeah.
And then I was over visiting the library on the day it opened, and Maureen was there at the door with a mop. A bit of a frown, I remember. But she looked like a librarian, didn't she? Just one-stop shopping here, play on this thing, play on this thing, and then go bother Maureen.
I love it.
But it's really neat to see the kids out there using that. I mean, you know, they're in there learning and doing some, doing what they should be doing in the library to truly work their brains, and then they get to come out and do this activity, I think that's really great. Good for the neighborhood. This is a view of Wesleyland Park, some improvements, this is really nice as well.
That did cost us a lot.
Okay. And then, William, you were asking earlier about PIMAP, so here, I hate to just show you pictures of pavement, because if you didn't see it before.
I love it.
But it's smooth, and it drains properly, so. There's more?
We have, the draft of our annual report was just published today, so if you want to read a draft, the final draft essentially, it's over on the table.
Oh, nice, thank you.
You remember this?
Oh, yeah.
I still, I'm so pleased that this thing went off without pedestrian injury or any other kind of a collision that I was just sure might happen, but.
Is it really?
So, to wit me, shoot. This wasn't as bad as I thought it was gonna be either. Nancy told me, I didn't believe it, the first time I saw it. This, some of this is happening now.
Yes, yes, yes.
We all know. But it's sure gonna be nice when we're done.
I covered great.
I'll ask you a question.
Oh, about the?
The paper.
Yeah.
The jug handle, this was our big one. This is the single largest transportation project in the history of your city.
Yep.
So it's a big deal. And we have an impromptu ribbon cutter on Bridge Staff. Just two weeks ago.
I'd like to just comment, doesn't have anything to do with the budget, but I just received here a letter that is gonna be duplicated, circulated from the Beaver Creek camera congratulating us on the communications we've had with the areas, and I think it was very big to see that.
I think it's a model for how to do these projects the right way. There is fair weather, which didn't help, it didn't hurt any, it was actually a little bit ahead of schedule, once we resolved. And then this is something kind of cool, if you watch the frame on the right-hand side, I just wanted you guys to see this, this way. That way you know how fast government workers can really go.
They had to do a better job of their lighting.
Yeah.
There it goes.
Wow, isn't that a thought?
Yeah.
Now, sweeping over on the left side, so it's a fall over.
It's a faith in engineers, I think.
Yeah. Yeah.
It had to reopen early, didn't it?
Very nice.
So your proposed budget was focused on the community needs and those commission goals that we mentioned earlier. It's balanced, responsible, meets all of the criteria established from Oregon Budget Law. And in closing our presentation, I want to give some recognition here, first to my assistant Katie Riggs. We ran out here, she's new to some of you, Katie's been with us about seven months, she was a great help in putting this together. And also I want to say just something, a few things about David Wimmer, he's here tonight with me. David, this is his 19th year of service with the city of Oregon City, he came to the city February 14th, 1994. At a time when the city's finances were in desperate condition. The city could barely meet payroll, had only $2 million in total cash assets. In his time here, he has completed 57 budgets. 19 for South Fork Water Board, 19 for Urban Renewal, and 19 for the city. Dave leaves the campsite better than he found it. As the city now has $29 million in cash, a double A bond rating, 89 cents left on its tax levy, and perhaps the fiscally healthiest city at its size in the entire state. So please join me in thanking David Wimmer. Job well done, Mothen.
Thank you.
So with that, we go to bringing questions. Anybody has?
Yes.
I was just curious about, what are the Gaffney Lane sidewalks?
Page, please.
Row number five. Second paragraph on the streets bullet, it's talking about the the expenditures for the existing projects included, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Number, number six is the Gaffney Lane sidewalks. I just didn't know what that was.
Especially because it says possible landslide mitigation.
Yes.
Well, it was that.
I believe that, let me, let me check my details for you, but I believe the budget is some to start working on the sidewalks on the piece of property that the city purchased right next to Gaffney Lane, Gaffney Lane School. I want to dig through my data, but, okay, I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Page 139.
Any others while Nancy's looking into that?
One has so much time to decide you, but David's leaving, is there an intended overlap between David and somebody else?
It depends on, we're having interviews for David's replacement at the end of this month, so it kind of depends on the moving schedule and some of those details. But we actually have it worked out where David can be on the retainer for us for the first three or four months, maybe even longer. That's what I thought we had worked out. We're hoping that there will be some overlap, that's the intention, that we would have the retention. He always says that.
So we've budgeted $50,000 for a possible in-house project relating to safe routes to school in the street fund. And whether or not that's going to be enough to do it or not is not certain, but it's a way to start working on it.
Commissioner Smith was speculating that was the loan where that piece of property is sticking out into the roadway, basically?
And we own that property.
Oh, we do, okay.
We're getting rent on it, everyone.
Show me the money.
Yeah, in the PowerPoint, it said property taxes, 3.4, but then in this document it says 2.5.
Yeah, they're all right, I estimated the Sess value at 2.5%, but last year, we got more taxes than what we budgeted, and so compared last year to this year's budget, it's up 3.4%.
So.
3%. The Sess value probably go up about 2.5%. That's why that 2.5%.
The reason I ask is because we just got it from the Sessor, they have asked us to move ours down. We had originally used 2.7 from the Sessor, and now we're saying 1.7.
Well, our letter we got last week.
Actually, you guys have most of today.
That's a good point.
Yeah, our letter we got last week said 2.75 to 3.25. So it's, and I did 2.5.
And ours was, well, we're doing the library, so.
Right, and you got a lot of compressed property outside, which we don't so much. I was surprised when I saw this, I just got this last week.
Yeah, we had another surprise, and I thought it was actually in my slide, but I was going to talk a little bit about the volumetric equation for Blue Heron. PGE, yeah, PGE's franchise fee that they pay to the city, we changed the calculation when Blue Heron was such a big customer. It made sense for our franchises when they were in operation that we had a different calculation, when we changed the method of calculation, there are two available. And they brought it to our attention, I think about six months ago, and what it means is we essentially get $300,000 more in franchise fees than we thought we were going to get under the old method. So that was a great save.
The reason it got so bad with volumetric is because Blue Heron was not buying PG from, I mean electricity from PGE, they were buying it from some other part of the world, and so there was no revenue to get paid on, so then they had, the legislature came up with this volume thing, which was sort of a stopgap. But now that Blue Heron is not there, that we get to go back and collect it on the higher revenue, which all the rest, everybody else in the city has been paying on a higher rate, the way I'm able to receive it, so now we are. Plus PGE rates are up, so it was nice.
Does that mean we'll be paying more through our rates?
No, well, they did go up. But the city didn't get a benefit of that until now.
Another question on the fund balance, I noticed it's a little bit under $1 million. And I was just curious, what the policy is, and what percent that is if you're operating, and whether that's sufficient to get you from July to November when you start receiving your taxes?
Yeah, well, it will be, but, yes, it is low. It would be about eight or nine million right now if we weren't throwing a million dollars to subsidize other funds. It's a little bit, it's about a million, something lower because of our loan to South Fork, too, which we're getting back. And we, and we're not, we have about $2 million, $2 million that we're not levying also, so we've got a lot of.
Wish your coach, well, but where is that?
Well, I wish it was more, I wish it was more, but it'll, of course, as things go, it usually comes a little bit more than what I estimate anyway. Yeah, it'd be nice if we had the eight or nine million.
David tends to estimate all of our revenues very conservatively, which
That's great.
Probably helps, helps him sleep, mostly.
I guess it's the same question, I, you know, I looked at the contingency, this current fiscal year is 7.2%, it's going down to 5.2%. I guess it's for those reasons that you talked about. If, if, for example, we didn't make the loan to South Fork, do you just have a kind of a rough guess what we would have had?
Yeah, I've got specifically here, it's I think they owe us, what, $1.3 million right now? And that's split between the general fund and the first rate fund. It's about, general fund portion is about 800,000 or 900,000, I believe.
Is that right?
Right. I mean, that's just money that's out right now that's coming back.
No, I understand, I understand that, but that reduction we see was for, was partially.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, that's Essentially, we're using some of these things like the payments we're transferring from Ermater, these are capital, kind of short-term projects, if you will. Shorter, I hope, than longer for Ermater, and this is, you know, it's a concerted focused effort that we're making to try and get that, get that done and get it off our backs.
So I was here in David Wimmer's earlier days, and we saw the contingency shrink and shrink and shrink.
We didn't have all these, all these wonderful things in the closet, now like the 89 cents, it raises 2 million taxes every one of them, we got we have all the subsidies and keep everybody on payroll and all the building and folks. Push comes shadow, you can't stop that, you'd have a million bucks right there.
And all those building transfers we're making too, that's another big, I mean, that's a luxury expenditure that most cities can't do, and we're we're making those investments because we need these facilities, ultimately, the budget is paying for it, and we spend it wisely, then we don't have to raise taxes later. So anybody else have questions about any of the other things we're doing?
I have another one, question about the, obviously, buildings, we talked about seeing improvement in permits and things for construction activity, we're still subsidizing those departments.
Yeah, a little less, but we still are.
It's, it's smaller, so what's the plan? And what's the waiting time? Are we going to wait to see funding, or what are the, what are the thoughts? When you fix the problem and not have a deficit, if we don't see a, a marked improvement?
Well, I think we can ask our community development director, he's here, and I have a comment on that, and we can talk about it more broadly, if you'd like.
I think one thing that we're doing, when we start looking at the budget for building and planning and GIS, is that, you know, historically, we've been fortunate in that we've had enough funds in building to actually put back. And what we have not done a very good job of, what we're working on, is to identify what costs, so we call it a subsidy to community development, but really a lot of that money is to pay for planning and building services that I cannot pay for with building fees. So we need, we've been trying to do a better job of identifying, how much work are we doing, for example, on street trees or natural resource committee, historic review board, planning commission, urban renewal, city commission, which we go as staff and contribute not only time at those meetings, but in preparation of those meetings. We've got, as I said, we've got street trees, we've got urban forestry, so there are a lot of services that we provide out of planning and building that are either from the general fund, because I can't charge a developer a subdivision fee and use that to pay for historic review. Or do we create a fee for that, or do we not provide that service? So I think that's the part where we need to get to a better number, is it, you know, you know, it's probably in the 35 to 50% range of what we do in terms of long-range planning, or customer service at the counter, or over the phone, or at the meetings, code enforcement, follow-up. Quite a few services we provide fall under that that aren't paid for in any other way, there is no other collection fee, so.
Right, and you've got to have those services, the people to show up and request those services, so you need to have the people there, that's the challenge is. And then as things get busier, you want to have the people there to manage those coming to the door, because then you have to provide good service, so it's a, it's a fine balance. And I know you're challenged with that, so that's why I'm just curious, kind of what the plans are. So I'm glad to hear you're kind of looking at where the work is going, and I guess we'll call it charging per department for those services to help keep the people there.
To me, it's not a straight, I mean, yes, you're taking money from the general fund, but it's not necessarily a subsidy, because you are getting a a demand is being met to provide that. And also with GIS, our geographic information system, which is our mapping system, historically has been under community development. You know, historically, we gave self-probability, and it's really morphed into information technology services for the city. So my department is really doing a lot of work on our website, on providing all the public outreach, so it's taken on a much larger role. And while we do have it split, we try and separate, we put IT more under the city manager general fund, and the GIS is still under community development, doing some work with Ms. Crashar's partner from Public Works, but once again, that's, that's a service that's being provided to the city, and that's, that's another one that comes on that community development charge, and it looks like that comes from the general funds, there is no revenue for that, so. It's kind of a long-winded answer, but.
No, yeah, that's, I just, it just makes no, you're taking, you're being thoughtful about, I guess, allocating the work where it's going to the appropriate department, so that that's helping balance the staff there, because it is getting busier, as you pointed out, and at some point, people will show up and need their, you know, plans etc. reviewed, and we've got no staff.
That's part of the reason we're still trying to keep at least a skeleton crew there, so when that occurs. You know, back in the boom days in between 2003 and '06, a lot of cities in Oregon, well, there were several that could pay for their entire building operation just with fees from all the permits that were coming in. And cities were constantly trying to think about, well, gosh, what percentage is all the community-wide services, and which ones are just for the developers, and how do we charge that? And I think Tony did a good job here just now of explaining that this department does a lot of things that are for the broader community good, that aren't just related to building fees and development. But, you know, there may come a time when we either have to bolster that amount from the general fund with our general tax revenue, or we have to look at individual fees for services that people get from the department. So that's really our two choices.
And the more carefully he articulates how that money is being spent, I think we also have a better track of, do we need to, do we need to give more money for this particular area? Which area is growing, you know, or which is, which is going to drop off, that we can, we can start not worrying about that as much. But that articulation, we don't really know that.
That assessment is one of the reasons that we didn't refill that position that he had budgeted this year, because we thought, you know, we wanted to be in a better situation than we were last year with a lower amount of subsidy, if you will, but we didn't want to, so we didn't fill the position even though we had it budgeted. We just wanted to be conservative.
I notice, I suspect a portion of potentially certain work you can contract with the county if you need to, to fill a gap, or no?
We could, on the building side, we have a governmental agreement with Blackfish County, and they actually do some of our commercial electrical exams and residential electrical, so we do have an existing IT.
So in our city, when building was at its peak, was the community development department, was it balanced pretty much with?
Oh, yeah, they have lots of money, I think they have like, I don't know, $700,000 or $800,000 fund balance. The problem was, there was a new state law when several years ago, we had to divide the building department away from the planning department, so the building department was making money in those days, and it's sort of it just killed the planning department, so now, and the building has used up its reserves several years ago, too.
So it's possible for it to be balanced at its peak, but.
The building fund could be, the planning fund under our current structure will not be. I mean, I can't, I was trying to explain, I'm not allowed to take in a subdivision application and pay for long-term planning. If you want to do long-term planning, the community's going to grant it from the general fund or another source.
Yes. I guess you have two little comments. On this city organizational chart, I think there's some committees on there that are active now, they're listed as inactive.
That's quite possible.
And then under economic development, I don't see that the land south of Kneema is listed as one of the goals in the next five years.
Which one?
Under economic development, first page, oh, page 55, that's a good way to go.
I'm not on the last question, you dug out the land south of Kneema. You got that area where the water goes in, and then it flows back out, and then you have the area where there's a marina and stuff, that's not the city limits.
It's within the
So everyone grows value, that's not the city limits.
Catherine, is there any? Any other questions, members of the public, anything you'd like to add, know about, clarify?
What are we going to do next? What are we doing next?
Yeah, we have a public comment, has to be in there, so. That's a good place to be, so I figured I didn't see it, so I thought it changed it.
It seems like a staff here.
I have some comments.
Do you maybe have a question?
If we were going to be funding, that's why I was asking what we were making, and is it appropriate to ask, I think those comments, as we're going through.
We're not going to go, I've gone through all the funds just now, so we're not going to go back through them, but if you have comments about them, just tell us, and we'll turn to that page and go through them.
One thing we might want to take a look at page four, where all the funds are listed, and you can see the comparison by fund, you can see the the except for the changes, like the street development, $12 million, that jumps out at you. The building reserve going up from $1.2 million, the library reserve up $900,000, the rest of them are just pretty small. Most, we haven't talked about, most of the funds, the smaller funds, we just talked about the bigger, the daily funds. If you want to go through those one by one, and we've skimmed through them real fast before. It's almost, if you look at that page four, there's almost like a management by except. it's almost, if you look at that page four, there's almost like a management by exception. Most of them don't need to be.
I was a little bit confused about this page four, David. Thanks for bringing that up. For this, for example, the last item on the arts commission, when I look for the 2011 and '12 past budget, there's 5185 allocated or adopted, and this year, there's none.
Right, it's done. It's, if you see back here, it says history only. Page 231, it has to stay there for two or three years while it works its way off, because there's actual sitting there for a couple of years. Two or three years will be, then won't show up anymore.
Rocky has a question.
Well, no, I do. Yeah. Okay, so say that again.
It's dead.
Well.
It's used up, there's no money.
Okay, but the money that was there is money that was from, because the arts commission went out in like, oh, God, 2000?
Yeah, several years ago.
Seven.
2007?
Right.
Okay, but, so then there was still money in it till 2011?
Actually, there was only like 2,600. We thought there might be 5,000 or 2,600, and we actually used that for artwork in the city hall, this traveling art show that goes through their recorder or whatever. That's where that, we just, over the last couple of years.
Was that, that was not a city commission-like decision? I mean, because if the arts commission didn't exist, who then decided how the money got spent for? I mean, that was just by the city commission, right?
Stop, you want to throw in your.
I guess the question is, because one of our goals is to restart the arts commission this year, so if we had money in there, you know, you know, I'm curious as to where it went and what that process was, but.
It went, we walk out, city hall and see all the artwork, changes all the time, that's where it went.
We're not paying for that anymore. I feel like it was identified as funding source for a sure amount of time, but then I think last year, the budget, we just budgeted fully for the rotating art in city halls to be paid for out of the general fund.
Okay, so that came to the city commission, it wasn't through?
Yeah, that was in that one, just budgeted.
I mean, in our budget process, it did, but.
There was like 2,600 bucks, and that was used up this year, or last year, actually. Now, it's being paid for in the general fund, right?
Yes.
Yeah, just to, 442 on the Urban City House Restoration. We have gotten monies in there before, we showed it, and our job to 2011 and '12 was none, and now we have like 450,000.
I'm working on a submill budget, and I've spent most of the day on it today, which you'll be seeing on May 2nd, where it's established, is that fund for last year, and established is $250,000. So, next time you see this, it'll be revised, 2011, '12, and we'll have 250,000.
Okay.
Very good.
Good.
What?
Item that I've been taking a little heat on, and this really surprised me, this really surprised me. On page 35, I need some of you to know that I'm an area that's near and dear to my heart of neighborhood associations. And last year, we had budgeted 36,050.
Yeah, that included Trail News. I'm taking that down today, adds up to 25,000 also.
Okay, and the actual is 28, and then it shows the proposed is 25.
Correct.
So, where's Trail News in there?
It's down there at the bottom, 3860.
It says Trail News.
So, to put those two together, then, that's what? So, it went from 36,000 to 55,000?
Yeah, well, I have a budget adjustment, it's taking that, making the 36,000 for this year, taking it to 25,000, and like setting up a new account, just like we're doing for Urmen Tinker, or whatever the difference is, and I'll.
Ermine, Ermine.
Really close to you.
I was hoping nobody would hear that.
So, I'm taking out it. The reason I asked the question, real frankly, is that we've had some neighborhoods concerned about the amount of money that they have to produce newsletters is inadequate, and that's why they aren't having as many meetings as they thought they ought to have.
So, they're going to have 25,000 bucks.
But that'll be exclusively dedicated to neighborhood associations.
Exactly.
Yeah, see, we were taking all out of the same fund before.
Yeah, always.
We got some people questioning, wow, they're using our money for Trail News.
Right.
So, we said, let's just separate them out, and then there's your money.
Yep.
When it's gone, it's gone.
That works.
So, that kind of ends that argument, I think.
Good. So, there's still no funding for a part-time even, neighborhoodally his own.
Right.
I know that some of the neighborhoods are concerned that we now will not be having representation at the neighborhood meetings, which Chris has been so kind to provide for us.
Well, I don't think Chris was providing representation. She was attending there, the meeting, but she wasn't providing. I have my department heads now going to those meetings as needed, and on a rotating basis, I go as well. So, we're going to have more information, frankly, than any coordinator I can think of, because we're the specialists in those areas where we're providing the service. So, I don't, you know, Katie has taken the other part of Chris's job as far as the CIC, so I just don't want to spend money there if we don't have to, if we're getting just as good of, in fact, I think our interface with the neighborhood associations in the city has improved in the last two years, but we haven't had that coordinated position. And as long as it's healthy and working, I don't want to just throw money at it, thinking that that's going to, I don't know what that's going to do, that's needed.
Well, there's still some care and feeding that needs to be done to the neighborhood associations, I mean.
Right, but we don't want the city, I mean, I don't think we want the city doing it, taking it over like a city function.
Oh, no.
Part of the beauty of it is it's generated from the grassroots, from the citizens and volunteers like you that are making that happen. So, I think we want to continue that, not make it seem like the city's sort of taken it over.
It was a bit of a surprise to a lot of people that, you know, that they felt like their lifeline had been cut. Might have been, might have been nice to sort of ease us all into that, that there's going to be, because it's a significant change to us. We've all gotten used to Chris, and I can understand that, you know, things need to be done, she can't be in that forever, and Chris is going to do a good job, but.
Yeah, it was a pretty high, high-intensity job last year.
Absolutely.
I mean, if there's comp that pay on the schedule, she would have said.
She definitely would have.
Hopefully, they won't do the same thing to Katie.
No, they won't.
I'm going to look out for that, too.
So, when did that change take effect?
Gosh, it's been about a couple of weeks now, I think, they passed the baton.
And was there communication put out to the neighborhood associations?
Yes, absolutely.
Is that a fact that it was communicated to the neighborhood association?
It was on the app, yeah. I don't know if it was after the fact, it went to the meeting that, yeah. But Chris, another reason she's got more workload now, because Lieutenant Nutter's retiring and was doing all the certification work for the PD, and now Chris is volunteering to do that.
You got to call.
I don't know exactly how that happened, but.
You know, I know some of us commissioners, too, we've been going to meetings. I wonder if we can coordinate between us, you know, who's going to which neighborhood meeting when, and kind of spread it out a little bit, that way utilize our resources that way.
I think it's really important for us to have representation, but just like you've heard me say this before, I want to sound like a broken record, but when you start talking about we need a position and you even have a name for it, the first thing my brain does is say, what's the problem we're trying to fix? Before we decide what the position is, that we need a position, and even what to call it. So, I want to look at the service and the connection between us and the neighborhoods, and I want it to be strong. So, I think it's important for leaders in our organization, our department heads and I, and other folks in our organization, to tend those frequently.
I sort of wish that we had had a job description of our tasks and all the work that Chris was doing. I don't know if she ever really documented all the things that she was doing.
Yeah, she got with Katie and went like this. No, but it's easier for Katie, if Katie just do it, huh?
One comment, one comment I will make is, Chris was attached with the police.
Right.
Okay, maybe not nearly as attached to the library or community service. So, now that it's going to flip, and we're going to have Katie more attached to the internal, but who's going to be the good connection to the police? Katie's got to be able to have that good connection there to tell the neighborhood about police activities also.
Well, I think the police department would probably send officers to those neighborhood association meetings, because some of the district patrolmen, I mean, I've been to neighborhood association meetings where the two district officers that are signing that district show up.
That happens.
And provide information. I think that's.
And sometimes it doesn't happen, though, so.
One advantage, too, Katie is on our executive team, so she comes to all of our staff meetings or most of them. And so, she knows a little bit about everything in the organization, and Chris's information was mostly from PD, so she was great for that, but didn't always have the same ready-hand information that Katie might have about other departments.
Right, right.
So, you know.
So, that kind of makes me nervous, just so, I'm just putting it out.
Well, let us know, what do you think, if we need to provide more employees at those meetings or different, again, let me know what problem we're trying to fix, and I'll be happy to dispatch the right people.
I'll work on trying to articulate the concern. I'm not going to call it a problem, but the concern that, my suspicion is the neighborhoods want to make sure that they have continued access to your office, which I'm sure Katie will be able to provide, but she'll only be providing that really once a month, you know, or through some scattered emails. It's a different feeling to just see a few, you know, one or two representatives from a neighborhood once a month than it is to go out and see eight, 10, 12, 20 neighbors and hear what their concerns are. It's just a different, it's going to be a different period of adjustment.
Well, let's stay in touch on it.
Okay.
And we'll play it by ear, and we'll see if we need to make other adjustments, and we'll certainly do that.
Okay. Did you, you want to comment on that?
I have.
Okay. One other area of concern, and it's just more out of curiosity, is back on page 43, when we're talking about the city reporters, I was, I am so pleased with what we are doing in our city reporters office, but I was curious about Granicus increasing its budget by $12,000 a year. Maybe that, in the grand scheme of things, that's not a lot.
It's a great opportunity for us, I think, see, I talked about what that means and what it's going to end up.
Minutes transcription, I'm also curious about that, nearly $3,000, that almost doubled. Page 43.
I don't have that.
I don't have.
840.
29.
Okay then.
So, let's.
842 or 44.
So, let's. Contract has increased. Part of it is because we are purchasing the new Legis藏system, which is an agenda processing solution. So, but we're actually moving from one solution to another. So, another one is going away, which was about a $5,000 a year service contract. So, that's going away, but the $12,000 will come in, and that extra, $7,000, you know, is, and the in-payment for the new Legis藏system. So, there was an upfront cost to purchase the system, and that's just a one-time cost, and then there's the maintenance on that. Let's see, there was, we also purchased a training system. It's a training module where we can do human resource orientations, we can do, in the police department, where there's lots of different trainings, they can, where you have testing that's required, that we can produce that. We purchased the system, but we didn't purchase the implementation of it yet, because it was just a little bit too costly at this time, but since we were making these upgrades now, we purchased the system. So, that's the increase there as well.
And the transcription?
It went up 3,000? I'll have to look at that.
Minutes transcription went from 3,100 to 6,000.
I have to look at it to see why it went up that much. I'm trying to think, we've added, we have, we have a bargain there, minutes transcription contract, but I, I'm curious, I'll have to look, I can't imagine it was only $3,000 in one year. Let me look at that and have to get back to you on that.
I trust you implicitly that you're making all the right decisions. I'm just curious.
Okay.
I can tell one of them is Natural Resources Committee, because I watched their last meeting, and it was, it's pretty long. It was quite a couple hours of.
They don't do the transcription for that.
They don't do the transcription on that, but they do the recording.
I'll look at, I'll look at.
And we don't really have a way of measuring, I know, is my understanding is Lamont Falls Media Center does not have a way of tracking how many people are actually watching it live or on its reruns. I am assuming that in our IT, we can see how many hits we get to a particular video and how many people are watching that.
Not in our IT, but Granicus has, there's a reports tab inside the software, and you can go in and see, I want to know what was the most watched video in this 30-day period. And just for your information, the CIC has been in the top 10. I know. The ones that are, has been seen the most.
And can we get history on that? So, can we see, you know, is the, are people watching Urban Renewal Commission more frequently than they were two years ago or five years ago?
We can set a range. We could say we want to see from this date to this date, and then it would show.
I'd love to see some reports on that.
Sure, anytime, I can, you know, just come into the office and I'll pull them up.
I'll make an appointment.
Sure, and then I actually have already committed and done some more PR, just to get the word out. It's going into the neighborhood association newsletters that this service is available, because I don't know that everybody knows that they can just log on and go to the website and watch them. So, we're just going to do some more advertising as well.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Page 83, Mrs. Parks Maintenance. It looked, it's a little hard to tell, but is there five full-time staff or four, five line staff, do you know?
We have five full-time maintenance staff plus Larry Potter, our parks and cemetery manager.
Maybe I'll go to page 81 and see what the staff are.
Those positions are split between parks and cemetery budgets.
Yeah. You're talking about Larry Potter's job position. One of the concerns coming from the commission, of course, is that we are, we're building more parks, and we had this flat, I think when I first came to Oregon City, there were four maintenance staff, apparently, and in the last 22 years, we've increased it by one.
By one person, yeah. Since I've been here for almost eight years.
Yeah, and this is, this is an issue, because we're also getting desires in our, in our natural areas to control invasives and so forth. There's some volunteer work going out there, that's fine, but it's one of these things that we have to look at for additional funding in the future. And there's been some discussion about whether we could possibly at one point or another have a parks maintenance utility piece, similar to where we have the streets pavement utility maintenance fee. And it's a dialogue that's going to be coming, and I simply wanted to bring that up as it's time, because we've been really flat-lined in terms of staff for a long, long time, and the needs are increasing, and people want parks, and so this is something I think we'll have to take a look at.
That's a good point. That even ties in back to Ms. Riosell's comments last year about the permanent maintenance pool, because that's one of the things the commission this year looked at in their goal setting, and I think more or less supportive of it for next year, but we couldn't do it this year because we're keeping our fudge to the unfiring decision. But next year, the commission is still that decline, so be expecting to see that in your budget next year?
It's something that may not be a longer-term issue, but we are seeing compression. It's something that may not be a longer-term issue, but we are seeing compression starting to come in. It comes in a property by property basis, it hasn't affected Oregon City much. But what will happen is if we, if, if we increase our tax rate and we have compression in place, it's going to eat into, first of all, the sheriff's levy and also the vector control levies because those special levies are, are the things that start first. So if we take a look at that, we really have to have somebody to come in and tell us how it will be impacting services of other agencies.
Well, that's one of the keys to utility fees is they don't, they don't affect the compression.
Right.
And so if you have a choice of funding something with utility fee versus taxes and you're in a compression scenario, you definitely want to think about that as one of the big factors. And then, of course, before we realized we had a compression problem two years ago, I was talking to you about, about Parks Maintenance Utility Fee because you have so many tax-exempt properties through being a historic county seat. And you have a lot of exempt properties, but you have a lot of demands on parks. So there's really two very good reasons to be looking at.
People have done around it and you're proposing perhaps a park maintenance.
Yes.
But it's one of these things that will, you know, really have to get out to the public to talk to this head of town.
Yeah, but you don't have to do the argument that you can get around the, the exempt properties because everybody uses the road. You might say, well, maybe you can't say that the church uses the parks or the county uses the parks or.
Well, it's parks and open space utility fee is what we're looking at. So open space, for example, would include the promenade and those areas where we maintain and provide service there where we all, last year about this time we were pulling roots and evasives out.
It will be again this week.
It will be again this weekend, so, yeah, that's for open spaces as well and, you know.
By the way, went, you know, a little over budget, which to me is fine, especially when you counteract that with a project like Wesley Lynn Park where we probably saved, I don't have any idea how much we saved, but here, there's two incredible parks that, so I guess I'm just looking at, you know, how much do we really save with this partnership with the high school that really probably allows us to do other things that we might not be able to do?
No, that's, that's a great point. I'll, I'll take it a little bit further than that, not just the, the current project, the restroom concession building, but the previous projects that they've done at Wesley Lynn, the, the amazing picnic shelter structure that's there, which is, it's phenomenal.
Yes, yes.
The, the arbers on the sidewalks and some other minor things they've done, it's, it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. I can't give you an exact number, we've kind of estimated and I, I'd have to go back and look that information up, but between all of those projects with the volunteer, the donated labor and then they also, they've, they go out and solicit materials from local businesses, you know, they'll go out and get a, a concrete company to come in and donate the, the labor and some of the material. Now, we've, we've, the city has contributed some of the money towards those projects, but overall it's, we've, we've estimated, I've, I've ballparked it in the probably $300,000 to $400,000 range for all those projects and save, and save money.
Yeah, it's, it's absolutely incredible. And, and if you have not gone, you know, we all live in Oregon City, but we kind of take some of these places for granted, I think, sometimes, but, and even people that live in, or people that work at the high schools, so few of them have actually gone to the park to see it. And when you see, like, it's been a while since I've been to the parks, so seeing the finished building there or nearly finished building within such a distance restroom, I can't even believe it. So if people haven't got to that park, it's, it's amazing. So I, I just hope we continue to do that project or, or help, I think that partnership is, is crucial and I hope that continues for, for a long time to come, if it can, from both the school district point of view and the city point of view because we have a lot of parks.
I love it.
You have to put up with that across the hall from you? I wouldn't believe what I put up.
We have, we have a lot of parks and, I mean, and I already know they're working on some projects possibly coming up that I've been talking with Braylon High School about. So it's, it's neat to see that partnership and how it could expand to other places in the city in other parks and bring a lot, if all of our parks look like those, I mean, it's unbelievable. And what's, what's so great about it, it's not only, I mean, it's, it's an obvious benefit that these kids, a lot of them, even though they hate to admit it now, will live in Oregon City their entire life.
Of course they want to, don't want to admit it.
They won't admit it, but, but they, they will be here, most of them, and have kids here and they'll drive past those parks and they will take care of those parks because they built them. And so it's, it's just, it's just amazing. So I think that's probably, you know, in, in the four years that I've been, or three in a little bit, that's got to be probably one of the coolest things. There was, there was an email about a month, a couple weeks ago that I'm hoping I didn't miss the deadline for, which, and I'll probably talk to you about it, it's, it's, they're basically looking either statewide or nationwide for these examples of how youth and, and how youth in general are participating in collaborative projects with cities. I can't think of anything better than that, what we're doing.
I, I really appreciate you mentioning that and along those lines, in case folks didn't know, I know some of you were on the commission a couple of years ago when we announced that Mr. Tucker, Britt Tucker, the instructor for the high school construction program and his class were recipients of a state Parks and Recreation Award for the Volunteer of the Year. And we actually brought him in at a commission meeting and presented the award and Britt got to come to our State Parks and Recreation Conference and receive that award in front of all the professional association and, and so we, you know, we've tried to give a lot of recognition and we do continue to work with them and they're doing other projects in, in other parks.
Scott, that might be a good thing to bring up in discussing overruns in other parks. You know, the balancing act that's going on.
Yeah, I think it's, it's very easy to say, look what we've, we're able to do. I mean, part of the overruns coming with parks was because we made improvements that needed to be made and.
Right.
And probably, probably took a mediocre part to just an extra level, which is just incredible.
And I think, well, it's a technical thing, but I don't think those parks, that park wasn't over budget, it was adjusted.
It was adjusted, it was within our, it was within our.
That's a technical term, the Limmer knows very well. There's a difference between being over budget and adjusting.
That's so people know the context of it.
That's so people can see that balance that we've got to.
You know, if you get to a project, I mean, just like when you remodel your house, you get to the bathroom and if you have money left, you say, hey, maybe we should get this or that.
The nice bathtub.
Special shower or whatever it is you want. If you've got money left at the end of the project, you can do those.
Well, and the perfect example is I, I remember the massive discussions about the fence and I never knew what the final outcome was until I walked through the park and I saw the fence and I was like, oh my God, it's beautiful. So, you know, to me, it needed to be done and it's so amazing.
And back to a budget perspective on it, beyond it being beautiful or amazing or cool or unbelievable, I suspect that there is, and perhaps if there's an economist in the room that would, that would be able to realize this to, maybe we would need a Realtor or somebody to say, what's the, how does the property value increase?
Oh, yeah.
In proximity to a nicer park? And I'll bet we could put a dollar amount on that, just like I know that we can put dollar amounts on the value of trees. I'll bet we could put a dollar amount of property values that are increased by the proximity of a nice park.
Of course we can't, we can't increase our taxes based on that.
No, but I think that we could use that as a selling point to sell the city, to say, you know.
For economic development.
Well, yeah, for economic.
That happens to be what I do for a living is know about parks things. There are, there are national, there are national statistics that are, have been shown exactly that, that the value of a home near a, near a built park is, is, is greater. Obviously the quality of life things and all that, but you're, you're exactly right, Wayne, there are, and there are statistics and there are, there are studies that have been done that prove that.
It would be interesting to see the dollar amount of that value as leveraged by the volunteer and the investment that the city has made in these to increase the value of the city. That's what I'm going to be getting at. I had two other comments to make, budget related. And I'll, and I'll give the softer one first. The softer one is, I don't like to be accused of ever having rose colored glasses or anything. I'm, I'm pretty conservative about those things. But am I naive to imagine that with all the money that we are setting aside for public works, for the library and so, and for the Urban and Your House and these projects that we are squirreling away all this money wisely for future expenditures, when those projects have become realized, does that mean we're going to be able to have that much more money to do other things such as maintaining and developing new parks or other projects? Or is that going to collapse? Oops, we have a little girl's hand in the corner.
Thank you. Let me just address the library portion. I'm, I'm putting aside an amount annually that I think will be close to the amount that I will need to pay for the bonds that I will need to take on to build a building. And so I want to put that money aside, not just to squirrel it away, but to, to make sure that I can provide the staffing and stuff that, at least at a certain level and pay the bonds. Do you see what I'm saying?
Is, is any of those bonds considered capital expenditures?
It is.
It's debt service.
Yes, it is.
It's debt service.
You got to, you sell the bonds, you got revenue, you build the, the library, you got capital outlay and then as you pay off the debt, you have debt service.
But it can all, but it can all be done with the same money?
Yeah.
So then, are you saying that after, after the library is built, that we'll still be needing to take that money out?
We'll still be needing to apply a certain amount of the income from the district towards the debt service and that.
Until the bonds are paid off, of course.
Until the bonds are paid off. Unless we.
Well, William, you, you ask a broader, more theoretical question.
Yes, I did.
Which, which in theory, I see, I see what you're, you're saying and I wish it were quite as simple as that. I think what we're going to find is that unless we want to defer maintenance, you know, you basically start paying, you start saving for your next car as soon as you pay off your current car, if you're smart.
Yeah.
And that's essentially, I don't, I think there's some extra money that will be available, frankly, when those things, those transfers are finished, but I think that we're, there's going to be maintenance and hopefully we'll be, have those set up on a depreciation schedule so that when those assets are liquidated or they've used up their service life, we'll be in a position to do something about it. So I don't think it's going to be a big windfall. I think there's going to be money for maintenance that's going to take up a lot of. I think another thing too is information technology is changing so rapidly and libraries got to be one of, one of the places that's really going to have to keep up with that for its public services and be ongoing.
So I, so I just don't want to have expectations of we get these projects, those projects completed and we'll be rolling cash.
Well.
We'll be using some of that cash that we've been rolling in to continue to pay for the facilities that we're using now in this building.
And we're not a savings institution, we're rolling in something that'll be service levels, you know, because that's what we do, we provide service.
Great, that brings me to my second point.
Okay.
Last week, I, I took a, a bold move on my part to get involved in yet another aspect of the city. Call me crazy, but I went to the, the school district's presentation on their, what do they call it, adjustments or?
Budget adjustment.
No, there's another word for it. Configure, card shuffling.
Reconfigure.
Reconfigure something, some euphemism for shutting schools down.
Yes, yeah.
Consolidating, is that what you?
Perhaps, and Tony needs to be in here. Because one of the issues that, Tony?
Tony?
One of the issues that came up in this, the school district issue was the fact that if they're going to be needing modular buildings, that there is, there is some permitting process that they have to go through and they are very, very concerned, at least the school board sounded very concerned, that the permitting process, while not onerous, and everybody understood the necessity for the safety and, and health and all those reasons for going through all of these things, they were concerned about the timeline and why this ties back to the budget. I want to know is, is there a way, and would it help if we were able to allocate some additional funds on a short-term basis to get those permits expedited to help the school district?
We met with the school, David Frager and I met with the school district representatives a couple of weeks ago. If you start laying out the timeline for, you know, free out, put together an application, submit application, public notes, planning commission hearing, then pull your building permits, your engineering plans, it's, it's not a realistic timeline, even under a best-case scenario of expediting those times.
And there's no way of fast-tracking that?
There certainly is, I think that we discussed that with, with the neighborhood, with the school district representatives and we just really felt that even fast-tracking and assuming everything went perfect, it's a very, very aggressive timeline and what happens if you miss.
And we offered to concentrate resources just for that, for them.
Good, good.
I mean, we, we made that offer right there in the meeting, but even they looked at the timing and we brought up the timeline and there's the 120-day rule, there's the publication notices.
Yeah.
And when Tony brought all that out, we didn't have to say this won't work, they said, this won't work. We can't do it on.
He indicated that it was exceedingly optimistic.
Yeah.
Exceedingly optimistic.
It was a little more colorful.
But you have to also understand, maybe the people that these guys met with were not the people that were at your meeting and maybe those.
No, they weren't there, you know, everybody was there.
Maybe they hadn't gotten back together.
They were all there, they were all there.
It sounds like.
The board members are going to bring.
It works as fast as you can.
And we've also left the door open if they need more help, come let us know and we'll try to, try to help in any way we can. I think they also have more work to do to make this decision. I mean, that's a hard decision for them. I think that they're not quite ready.
They boiled it down to two, two options and, and then they basically asked for a vote from all the parents that are there and it was pretty conclusive that they, what their choice was going to be. I'm not going to broadcast it because it's not public, but, but I think they've made their decision what they want to do.
It was a public meeting, it is public.
Well, the board hasn't voted on it yet, but the, but the opinion from, it was a good crowd of people that showed up there was that they would close both schools and move to a, move to a three-year middle school scenario. And there's, and God bless them, they're taking a very positive approach on it and they are saying, they're talking about all the benefits that are going to come to a three-year middle school program and the cost savings that they're going to have by.
About $900,000, I think.
Yeah, they, they are definitely going to make some, some savings there.
Right, there's cost savings, but having a child in the middle of that situation.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, absolutely.
I have a problem with the sixth grader middle school, that's beside you.
So that's a whole different.
One of the comments by a sixth grade mother was saying, you know, what kids are surprisingly more resi, more resilient than the parents are.
It's what they're being exposed to.
Ah.
To be adult things at that level.
Yeah, that's right.
That's the problem.
Anyway, I didn't mean to turn this into a school district decision, but, or discussion, but, but I just wanted to know if there was.
They're great partners.
Okay, that's fine.
Anything we can help.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments by anyone in the room, anyone at all?
I have one, back throw one for our law enforcement is we obviously see kind of what's coming up this year, what do you, I guess, perceptions on how that will impact the city. I don't know how prior negotiations have gone, looks like contracts, contracts coming up.
Labor contract?
Yeah, labor contracts are coming.
Labor contract was, I think, settled three, I'll start, again, next year expires in June 30th of 2013, so we'll start negotiation probably in about January of next year.
Okay, I'll worry about next year.
Last year's, last contract settled in one day.
Was the quickest.
That was the record.
Awesome, cool.
It's kind, it's kind of interesting to note that when I first came on the commission, Asney was the easiest union to deal with, Tracy was the most difficult one to deal with. That changed around. Any other comments or questions? Well, Mr. Fragerite, I do have a question and I think, as you know, I don't ask the typical line item questions, I take more of a broader approach. line item questions, I take more of a broader approach, kind of a balcony overview. First of all, I, I think the budget is a good budget, once again, as in last year. I think it's a balance, I think it's conservative, I think it's fair, I think the department managers worked hard, my guess is they didn't get everything they wanted in the first round. Chief, did you get all the cops you wanted?
I never have.
I was gonna say, that's a loaded.
Sensitive, sensitive to that, and yet I think it reflects discipline. To me, it looks like a combination of things, probably, spending control, I think your department managers are doing a great job in prioritization and goals, and then whatever marching orders you gave, and then pick your top three, whatever it was, I think they did a good job. And then, a lot of it, too, I think a lot of credit goes from Mr. Wimmer in the, in the revenue forecast, and being very conservative, and I think that puts you in that position where a lot of local governments, especially small cities, aren't in the position, financial position we, with such a healthy any-fund balance and contingency and conditions and that. For all the PG franchise, cities I've worked in before, they would've had to rely on that for operations, and when Dave came to ask it, so we landed on community trust, you know, and we didn't have the scum, which was a good, it was a good position to be in. A lot of people here have been disciplined over the years, it comes. Well, and I think it's showing as it did last year. And I think things will improve, I mean, when you drive around, you see development, you see construction, there's certainly a lot of traffic on 213 and Beaver Creek Road, and so I think things are changing. So my question is, you know, from kind of a lofty perspective, then, and I have to tell you, out of the entire document, sorry, I know a lot of people worked really hard on this document, but the one that I really like and read the most is this one, because it's kind of a Reader's Digest version, and it's something I can get my head around. So my question is, you obviously have goals, and it looks like you're making progress financially towards those goals. You've got benchmarking going on there, and you've got some plans that are, that are reaching beyond the fiscal year, and I know Mr. Wimmer's plan, and your plan is to move to a financial budget. Yep, I think that's, got a lot of, a lot of credibility there to that idea. You feel good about where you are, and where you want to go in the financial environment, and the financial situation that you have right now, that you're achieving those goals? Yes, the, of course, you always have a little anxiety when you've had a long-term finance director, and you're making a change there. So we have four good candidates now that we're focused on, and we're gonna have every process. I rely a lot on process, so we're gonna have a pretty active, engaging process the candidates will go through, and at the end, then we'll finish our background checks and reference checks, and, you know, we fill two key positions this year, one in my office and one in economic development, and I think the results speak for themselves, and I'm hoping that we will have the same result in our finance director, and then I think adding that assistant finance director is gonna, I think that is actually gonna pay for itself, the way we manage our funds. Because Dave does an amazing job, but it's one person doing the job. I've said it before, he's done the job of three people, and if you go in his office, you can tell.
Yes.
See all the papers.
He knows where everyone is.
He knows exactly what they are.
Nancy's pretty much got the whip up, got all of us, the commission level is all paperless, but we're making up for it.
Almost.
But, you know, that's a little bit of anxiety, frankly, for us, because we're making a change there, but I think all the applicants that we have are qualified, you know, hoping for a good result, and. So there is a meet and greet for those folks, too, coming up. Jim, what's the date?
Twenty fifth. Wednesday, the twenty fifth, at the High Cliff, excuse me, from five thirty to seven.
Would love to have you guys come there and size up the candidates, and meet them, greet them, fill out a little card, tell me what you think. I read every one of them, every card that gets submitted, I read them all. And if you say submitted by the budget chairman, it might be even more. No, just kidding. What time was that? Just kidding.
Five thirty to seven.
But it is good to have that feedback, you know, so I would like to have that feedback. Any other business we need to take care of before I ask for a motion? Hey, Mr. Wimmer, is that one motion or two? Do we need one include?
You know, you need to approve a budget for a total amount, and you need to set a tax rate, you know, fire levy amount.
You can do this right after five years.
No, no, I have to look at it every year.
Yeah, okay.
But I did have a, if we're gonna be there, I need to make one little change to let you know that.
Okay.
It's in, on some page, two forty-five. Yeah, last week, we pulled a civic improvement trust net, and I always throw a number in the budget, I don't know what they're gonna award for sure, anyway, they awarded fifty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars instead of the forty-five thousand I had, so I need to increase that forty-five to fifty-two, and also decrease the contingency by seventy-two, seventy-five. It doesn't change the overall budget.
Didn't we get that seven thousand to roll over?
Yeah. We have a fund balance accumulation, and we're spent, pretty much spending, spending that fund dry, and we've been spending more than we've been bringing in the last few years.
But it's not like we added another seven thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars had already been earmarked.
It was there, we just hadn't spent it before, and we're not gonna spend it for, for the grant from several years ago.
No, we're gonna spend it on this year.
Some of the, I can see the fact that somebody did use their grant, that's why, that's what I'm about.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not just taking money out of.
It's a park place.
Park, um, park, trails.
Change, right, they spent half of it.
Yeah, working trail funding.
Yes.
Well, with that modification, I'd love that we adopt this budget, if this is an appropriate time to do that.
We have your.
We have to have the numbers.
Specific numbers?
Yeah, it's all here on here. Specifically, I really changed, I was gonna be.
So you have to.
So, well, you could put it into a motion, is that correct?
Yeah.
And he's specifically talking, again, to item ten?
Ten, eleven, twelve, what are you doing?
Could he do one, you want?
Sure.
Without taking a breath.
All right, well, spotlight's on you. So again, item ten, eleven, and twelve.
And twelve.
Put it into a form.
I would have motioned that this, this committee adopt the.
Actually, approving it.
Approving is the word, adopting will happen by the commission.
All right, well, I move that this committee adopt, do we, we approve. I'll move this committee approve a maximum total expenditures for each fund, propose at eighty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Eighty-one million.
Eighty-one million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars for all thirty-nine funds, and that we approve the total taxes for local government as an amount and/or rate of four dollars, point one five nine zero, general fund, and two hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars for the fire bond levy.
Six sixty-two.
Six sixty-two, or is it?
Six twenty-two.
Six sixty-two. And that we approve the budget recommendation for fiscal year twenty twelve, three thirteen to be forward to the city committee.
Correct? There's a motion and a second?
Second.
Any, second, second? Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by raising your hands. Any opposed? Motion, news, carry, thank you.
I have something for you. Yes. This is about a crazy budget meeting, but it's obvious that you, over the years you guys, we've established credibility in you guys, and you trust us, but, yeah, it is a good budget, and thank you for trusting us, and.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss a lot of, a lot of things about this job.
Yes.
I have some really high, high experiences during the year, and first, about getting the budget approved is one of them, and this is my last big, big, big piece before I get out of here, but I got a lot of, a lot of smaller pieces related to this, but anyway, I sure appreciate all the opportunities I've had here, and I love the idea of living in this town for all these years, all the exciting people we have here, and the exciting things that are happening. I'll be seeing a lot of you guys everywhere, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
Thank you for all making our job, my job a lot easier.
I'll take a moment if I might.
David, there's an opening for an assistant.
As long as I don't have to come to work. Just pause, I check.
If I might, I guess, as a commission member, I've been involved in more of these meetings with you than others for a longer period of time, probably after your fourth or fifth years when I came on. And he was, he was giving him the dire warnings every year I was there, and really, those things didn't turn around, in my opinion, until Larry Patterson came on as city manager. And some very tough decisions were made at that particular time, we closed the Hilltop Urban Renewal District. Those were the two years I was off, maybe that's why you made progress there. And you also, we, you know, we had, we had some layoffs there, and that resulted us being in a healthier position, but you were giving those warnings for a long period of time, I don't know if they were falling on deaf ears, that nothing's happening.
Oh, it's not that occurred.
And the, and we were, and I appreciate all, all that you've done, and the warnings you were given, and when the, when the time was appropriate, we could turn it around. We were also very fortunate on the annexation vote, and the library district vote, which preceded our recession, fortunately, because those both, I think, passed by two-thirds or more in both of those cases, and put us in a very healthy position, particularly the fire annexation vote. And I think, I think it was your skill set, and I think it was also that we were very lucky, certain things fell into place exactly when I did.
Yeah, this is amazing, being in this situation.
So thank you very much, David.
Yes, thank you, David.
With that, I believe we're adjourned.
Just a reminder, you've got your packet for the Urban Renewal Budget Committee, which you finished tonight, so you have two nights off, but next Tuesday night, the twenty-fourth, I just want to make sure for those that are here, that you have your packet there in front of you, the hard copy.
Oh, this is cool.
Yeah, so just want to make sure that you noted that, and that's all I have.
Fourth, where?
Um, right here, April twenty-four, five thirty, right here. More pizza.